So I would like to call this meeting to order and document the time at 6:34. If we could, rise and do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome and thank you. I'd like to start out with the mindfulness exercise. I really need one tonight, so.
Perfect, all of y'all. So just get in a comfortable seat or stand. And we're gonna just take a couple of minutes to arrive. So take a deep breath in for focusing and breathe out for relaxation, settling in. Breathing in, straighten up. And breathe out, settle in. And just find a nice regular breathing pattern. And the focus tonight, if you can, as you breathe in and out, is thinking about gratitude. And holding anything in your mind that brings you happiness and things that you're thankful for. So as you find a regular breathing pattern, breathe in gratitude and breathe in out. Sending thanks for this grateful community that we live and serve. And you may open your eyes and come back into room.
Thank you. Not long enough to fall asleep, but certainly long enough to change mental direction.
Raise your right hand and you may proceed.
I, Mohammed Abd, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the office duty and the trust of the school trustee for this Winuski School District. And that I will then saw equal right and justice to all people to the best of my judgment and ability according to law. So help me God. I also solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United, of the state of Vermont and of the United States. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard. All right, thank you, Jay. Appreciate that. Yep. Uh, no, not sworn in because you got continuous, uh, continuous service. But we do have to take care of election of officers. And so we have to do the president and secretary. So we'll do the president first. Nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mike DeCarlo.
I'll second that.
I'll third it.
Hearing a nomination, any others? All right, with that, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Uh, for secretary, I would open for nominations for secretary?
I nominate Jen Corgan.
Me too, second.
Any other nominations for secretary? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome, thank you. We'll take good care of you, not a problem. Okay, very good. So just a couple of other administrivia pieces up front here if we can. Uh, we got committee assignments next, but I want to do one piece first. We've historically been doing Roberts rules for small boards. And if there are no concerns about continuing that, I'd like to request or recommend that we continue using it, Roberts rules for small boards. Any concerns otherwise? Okay, we'll do that. Um, the other piece is, just to announce our meeting times, we have been meeting on the second Wednesday of every month at 6:30. Plan would be to continue that unless someone has any reason to move those. So we will meet every Wednesday, every second Wednesday, second Wednesday of every month at 6:30 PM. And they'll be warned as we normally have then, but at least gets it on the table. Good, all right. The committee assignments, the one item we did not have on here was a negotiation committee. So I want to make sure we add that piece. Communications, we had put it as communications. We came out of our retreat in August and called it retention around trying to keep families in the district longer term. I think communication about what's going on in the school came up as probably a better alternative to that. Julian and I had been kind of puttering with that to get that off the ground. So that's what that communications is.
So you two are the current people doing it?
Right.
Then I recommend you continue doing it.
I second that if we need one.
Okay.
I don't know that we need to do all the assignments, as long as we all recognize where we are.
Unless anybody else wants it, but yeah.
Right, the parent engagement was Jen and Tori. We're working through that. We haven't had an update, but we'll get one next month to see where we are. So do you guys in for continuing that piece?
Sure.
And again, kind of paving ground as to what exactly it means, but.
Right, have some great ideas.
Just need to keep pushing.
So Tori and Jen?
Tori and Jen on the parent engagement.
And who was on the communications?
Uh, Julian and I.
I thought so, I just wanted to make sure.
And actually, we'll incorporate, we can't have three. I was gonna say we'll incorporate Mohammed to do it along, but we can have a core on the committee, so.
Well, would Mohammed want to do the parent engagement with Tori?
Oh, that, that might work. Would you?
Because he would have more access.
We're still trying to define exactly what they are out of our board retreat. But we're trying to figure out a way to get parents involved, so, okay.
So Tori and Mohammed on parent engagement?
Yeah.
Julian and Michael on communication, negotiations?
Yep, and then so negotiations was Jen and I from the last go around.
Okay.
Is that something I?
I still want to do it.
You guys did a bang job, I'd say you keep it moving.
Keep up with the momentum.
You guys are good with that? All right, any other committees that we've missed? We have very, very few. I think by definition, that's probably.
About like the Nellie Mae and all that, is that all? Do we have any of those committees anymore, or partnership for change?
No, I remember us getting that conversation, what's a board committee? Like what's a board committee and what's ones that we just joined?
Right, we join as a member, as a board member, joining somebody else's committee.
Just making sure that wasn't what this is following in there, okay.
Okay. So Tori and I have been kind of the steering committee reps as that's gone along, alternating a little bit, but. So unless somebody's got a deep interest in getting involved in the Nellie Mae partnership with the steering committee.
No, I think they're doing a good job.
All right. Any other committees? I think that's pretty much all we, all we had. All right. Okay, agenda review and adjustments, any changes? Okay, one more that goes with just announcing the meeting times and the small board rules. This is, uh, the rules on electronic meetings, should somebody want to take one of these off. Take it off-site, be either on the phone or, so.
Those are kind of the rules and regulations.
We have to run across one where somebody's out.
So that means we don't have to plan anything anymore?
Uh, well, you know, to some degree, we, uh, it's always good to have it in a room, but should we need.
Someday you'll see five computer screens sitting around here.
What I would add to this is at the very beginning, the, you know, it's recommended during reorganization that you talk about the new part of the open meeting law, which is electronic meetings. So that's in bigger type on the first page at the top for your review. The entire open meeting law statute is in the next couple of pages. Also, you're gonna have an in-depth training next month from Joe McLean from a local law firm. Who's gonna come in and do an hour on open meeting law. So you'll be able to read up and ask a lot of good questions next month about it.
So, okay.
So what's gonna happen in the board meeting?
Yes.
That's our education over the next couple of months. We tried to organize fiduciary education, some Roberts rules and some open meeting laws for new members, right after new members come on in March, to try to do a couple of months and get us all a little better educated as we go. Okay, any agenda review or adjustments? Any items to move around or differently at? Okay. Um, with that, I'll turn it over, Sean, for the focus on learning intro.
All right, so our focus on learning today is going to be, the topic is wellness and it's going to be presented by our new wellness coordinator, Jacey Puttletz, who we're very excited to have on staff and has done a tremendous job this year in moving many of our wellness initiatives and supporting things like mindfulness, like the food security movement and many other things that she's gonna talk to you about, so.
So I'm gonna give you basically an overview of what we've been doing in all the schools. So, let's start it.
There is a clicker right there if you want it to, right next to the.
That might actually get me a little. I know where the down button is. So just to, here's an overview of what I'm gonna talk about today in the 20 minutes that I have. It's five main topics, nutrition programs, our mindfulness and movement, employee wellness, communications, and then other initiatives that fall under wellness. And I've kind of taken out charge, lead in. So for our nutrition programs, the first one that I want to talk about is the Vermont Food Bank. We partner with them for two major programs. One of them is our backpack program. So in the, in the elementary school, student families who are eligible can sign up to receive some additional food on Fridays. So the students get them confidentially in their lockers. They take them home to basically eat through the weekend. So it gives them a little extra nutrition for the weekend. Uh, the school pantry, very popular program here. We have fresh produce delivered here in large bins in our lobby on the first and third Friday of every month through the school year. There is some talk about extending that through the summer, but it hasn't been approved. The grant hasn't been approved yet, so we're kind of anxiously waiting to find out if we can get that extended. We have families come in, so it's not just the students who filter through, but our families do come in and take advantage of it, and it's wonderful. So as you can see, our backpack program, each week I service about 80 students with a bag of food. And in school pantry, we have about 550 individuals each month. So if you divide that by two, it's almost every two weeks that we have that food here. And there's items such as potatoes, corn, onions, things that can keep, you know, at least get home. So it's nothing that's really perishable right away. The backpack program, that's all canned and processed food, so it can stay through the weekend. So it doesn't have to be refrigerated. And then, so the backpack program is targeted for elementary school, but we do have some students who I have learned do have an extra need. And I hear this usually through the social worker or maybe a teacher that are in middle school that will take part in it. And then, of course, the school pantry is open to the entire school community. Our fresh fruits and vegetable program is at the JFK. And every day they get a fresh fruit or vegetable at the afternoon snack time. And that's wonderful because it introduces students to things that they may not normally try. Our universal meals, as you know, are part of a community eligibility provision. So all students in our schools get breakfast and lunch for free. And we have seen that the numbers have increased. So the wonderful thing about having this universal meals is that it reduces the idea of have and have not. So all students can participate and go through that line. And what's kind of cool is sometimes teachers will go through, I mean, they pay, but it's nice that teachers also eat the meals, you know, so they're in line with, with the students. The one thing on this one that I wanted to point out is when I was first hired here, I didn't know anything about the schools. I, so I walked around the lot and I stayed. Our breakfasts are served in the lobby to our middle and high school students. And I went out and I watched them. There's a lot of confusion on what they were supposed to take. And as a part of the universal meals, they have to take a full meal. So they can't just go through and get just an orange juice or just a bagel. They have to take what constitutes as a full meal. So it could be a bagel and a juice. There's a fruit or fruit option that always has to be taken. Plus, two points is what we call them. It depends on the calorie of either a yogurt and a granola or a full bagel or a breakfast sandwich. So I went to the high school and middle school TAs and I gave them a short education lesson on, first of all, the nutrition, the food plate that we talk about, all the food groups, and then why they have to take that full meal. So it reduced the confusion in, at breakfast, and now breakfast run a lot smoother. So that was one kind of highlight of the first few months when I was here. And I worked with an intern at UVM to do that, and she was very helpful.
Do you, do you have the problem at lunchtime with that, or no?
Well, at lunchtime, students are pretty familiar with the, with the process and they know what they have to take. It's kind of on their plate. So they, when they go through the line, the plate is given to them. Unless they go for a sandwich or pizza, they know they have to take a fruit and optional milk always. So it's not as big of a problem. But with breakfast, you have to understand, they only had a very small amount of time coming out of a class and then going to their next class, which is wonderful, by the way. Many schools don't allow food in the classroom. We do here, and that's awesome, because they don't have to rush to eat that breakfast. So our mindfulness and movement, actually, I think kind of should be two slides, there's so much going on in there. Many of you know about the Mindful City project that we worked with.
Center for Mindful Learning.
Just dropped my mind, Center for Mindful Learning. And that's gonna be ending on August, or April 1st. So that's the end of the grant. So we're kind of getting Lindsay and Denise in here quite a bit to work with our, our teachers. And, you know, because on April 1st, it kind of ends. So we're kind of looking, I'm talking with Lindsay about how we can continue Lindsay's work here beyond the grant, because she has been so instrumental and so helpful here. But we've had students doing mindfulness with the police officers. They were at the city council a few months ago. So it's getting more and more pervasive. And as a part of that, our mindful classrooms, we have, this year, we started in the middle school and high school. We have 10 teachers there now doing mindfulness with their students on a daily basis in many cases, most cases, actually. And then, of course, JFK, this is their second year doing the mindfulness program with the Center for Mindful Learning. It's called Modern Mindfulness is the name of the program. And almost all of those teachers are using mindfulness in their classroom.
So like 20 or 30 teachers, or how many, how many teachers are there in JFK?
There's about three per grade. So 18, 19 classroom teachers.
So, yeah.
Wow, how come there's only three high school teachers? I figured they'd be all over there.
Well, when they get into high school, the demands on the students increase. So it's harder to take more time in the classroom to, you know, to do that. And that'll come up in a few minutes when I talk about physical activity.
It's ironic since that's when they really need it.
Right.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And then Spartans in Motion, I just wanted to talk about that. I'm on the committee for that. That's our middle school activity program. So every day, instead of recess, they have a structured movement program. And we call it Spartans in Motion. It's, when I went to a, a health meeting with V-HI a few months ago, it was actually highlighted as, as a positive work being done. And they showed the video that they made last year. So a lot more people are talking about it, and we get a lot of credit for having this program. And I live in Colchester. When I drive by the middle school, kids are outside just huddled around like penguins, you know, outside. They're not doing very much on the recess playground. Here, those students are truly active during recess. And that is wonderful for them. It gives them that opportunity to expand that energy and get some movement in. We do, we're now moving to following winter games where they actually have kind of a goal, something to work towards. Cause if you can imagine, doing circuit kind of training over and over, it gets a little redundant. So we have to kind of keep it fresh and keep it real for them to really keep their interest, especially the middle school mind. So we did, just recently, we did winter games where we gave them five different or four different exercises to kind of work towards a goal in one minute. So for instance, how many jumping jets can you do in a minute? How long can you stay in, in a seated, you know, position against the wall? Partner planks where they have to clap hands, how many times can you do that in one minute? So they, they worked on that for several weeks before the games happened. So all these kids were training, you know, during their time, because they really wanted to get that trophy or they really wanted to win the Spartan Games. So it's very exciting. We also did a survey with the students to find out what was their feeling about physical activity? How did they feel about SIM? And it was generally positive. About two-thirds of them had positive feelings about doing SIM every day. There were some that were neutral and then some that are negative, and that happens. But they understand, you know, most of them understand that physical activity is important to do every day. And that was one of the questions. So that was a good feeling for us to know that this is a positive thing, and they do view that as a positive thing. Any questions on this?
It's great that you give, you've got the voice in there, too.
Yes. Oh, and we just started, oh, I forgot to add it. Uh, we now have students on the committee. So we have, that just started about a month ago. We have three or four students who now have a student voice into what we're doing on the SIM committee. So that, that's new.
And it's just for middle school?
Just for middle school right now, yes.
Is it 20 minutes a day, is that right, or?
It, it, well, it's a 25-minute block. By the time they get there and then they have to go off to lunch, it's about 20 minutes, 15 to 20 minutes of true activity, you know, movement.
And this in addition to gym class?
Right, but not everybody has gym class. Remember, it depends on what trimester they're in or, or what their arts rotation is, so.
Which is why it's so important.
Yeah, right.
Moving on to employee wellness. So when I started here, I found out that, are you all familiar with V-HI? Vermont Edu, uh, oh wow, I just lost it. Vermont Education Health Initiative. So for educators in the state of Vermont, it is basically, it's run by VISBIT, the Vermont School Board's Insurance Trust. So they have a group of people who kind of work with us to make sure that we are, we have a wellness that's going on in our schools. So, and they work with coordinators, and many times coordinators are teachers. So Winuski is very unique. I think I'm the only paid wellness coordinator in the state of Vermont. I know I was in Colchester and I was part-time there, so I'm full-time here. I know that there is one in Colchester and South Burlington. So Winuski actually, because, I love it, I think it's great. I say that because I actually love being a wellness coordinator and I'm so happy to be here. But the fact that you actually said, "We want someone to do wellness full-time," is huge. And it's actually kind of a new thing. And the, the, the people I work with at V-HI, they're always very interested to know what I'm doing here and how we're doing it more. And they've kind of looked at, you know, between Colchester and Winuski, the things that we're doing here, they want to take that beyond and share with other schools. So for instance, I'm gonna talk about the Wellness Day. Very few people have a day where they give these employees, our employees, our teachers and our staff a whole day to just focus on their wellness. So, so with the V-HI path, when I came in here, I found out that wellness leaders through V-HI were typically the administrators, like the principals were kind of doing it, or maybe a guidance counselor. So when I came in, I recruited teachers to be the wellness leaders, because I wanted their voice. What is, you know, what's the temperature like? You know, when you, when you talk with other staff members, let me know what's really going on in their minds about wellness. Cause an administrator, they won't always talk to an administrator, but teachers, they'll talk with their own colleagues. So it's nice having, you know, people who are on the same level, being those role models for wellness. So we have five wellness leaders, two in JFK, I'm one technically, and then one in the middle school and one in the high school. So that's great. And then for coordinators, there's a program called PATH, Planned Action Towards Health, where we, we kind of do a, V-HI has a program where people can track their activity and get incentives for doing activity through the winter. We have three different people working on that. So I kind of like, look at this, is I have a team of eight people working on wellness here in Winuski. And then for our Wellness Day, last week, the survey that we, so first of all, Wellness Day is a full day of wellness-related activities, most of them led by teachers and staff who work here. I did reach out to like the YMCA, Whole Health Nutrition, which is based in Williston, Laughing River Yoga, so two yoga teachers from there came, Erica Bronze, one of our parents came, taught a class. And they volunteered to offer classes, yoga, Pilates, Zumba, jazzercise. We had crafty things like jewelry-making, macrame, art-related activities. So it wasn't all just physical activities. Some of this, you know, just kind of relaxing. There was some, lots of mindfulness, actually. We had the Center for Mindful Learning here doing three different sessions. Walking, meditation, you know, relaxing for stress, to reduce stress. We had organized sports, soccer, basketball. So employees could choose something to do at four different times of the day. And we spent a whole day doing this, plus getting together in the morning for a whole group activity where Sean spoke and I spoke, and we just kind of talked about wellness. And at the end of the day, we did an ending activity. If you walk around the school, you'll see little like thought bubbles or talk bubbles. At the end of the day, I asked teachers to write some kind of positive encouragement, some kind of inspirational thought to put up on the walls. So when the students came back the next day, the hallways were filled with all these positive thoughts. And I did see many students kind of sitting there reading them and walking and reading them. And they did, it was, it was really great. And now, you know, they've been up for a week, so they don't read them as much. But it was nice to be able to come in that first day and look at all these colorful words all over the walls. So I did a survey after that, a post-event survey, and it was like 99% positive. And everybody wants to do more of it, you know, twice a year, every week, every day. So we're, that's what I want these wellness leaders to do, is kind of find out what can we do as a group to kind of keep that momentum, that good feeling going throughout the rest of the year. So one thing I've challenged them is to come up with like a walk at lunch day. So I'm asking the wellness leaders to, to look into that.
I want to, Jacey, just to add, one of the things that was different this year is, last year it was just administrators and faculty teachers. It was the entire staff this year. So we had custodians and maintenance. And we even had some of the abbey group who jumped in, you know, while they weren't preparing meals and everything. And so it was really cool to have every adult involved this year.
Yes.
We are one community, so.
That's right.
Makes sense.
And it's wonderful they had the opportunity to be social, too. Social wellbeing is also important, to know each other outside of like, hey, did you, you know, have business? Like only talking business together.
One of the most common comments was, "It was great to see my colleagues outside of work." "It was great to be in it and just relax with them," many of them.
And we challenged people during the day at different junctures to go and, and meet people they don't really know. And interact, or introduce themselves and, you know, get to know each other a little bit so that we can really build that unified community approach.
And it puts some people, you know, at, not at ease, they're ill at ease, so to speak, because they're not used to that kind of thing, you know, they come in, they do the job, they leave. It gave them an opportunity. And one of the comments said, "I was very stressed when I got here that morning, but by the end of the day, I have, I have relaxed. I felt comfortable with what was going on." So not everybody likes these kinds of activities. It was very social, very kind of extroverted, so to speak. You, you kind of had to be with everybody else. So for an introverted, that's out of their element. So many of them were able to find some, you know, some comfort in some of these quieter activities, smaller group activities. So I tried my best to have a broad range of something that they could find that they could do. Uh, we have ongoing Zumba and yoga classes, although the Zumba classes have kind of ended right now. But yoga classes, the woman who came for our Wellness Day has agreed to carry on for six weeks. So she's gonna offer an after-school yoga class for our staff. And then mindfulness training, there was mindfulness training at the beginning of the year. I'd like to see, find, and we also had a mindfulness retreat offered to all employees. We only had six people go, but that was six people. Next year it will be 10, you know, it's, it's a, it's a start. So I'd love to see some more mindfulness training, we'll look into that. As I said, I'd love to have Lindsay come back. Lindsay Foreman has been kind of our spearhead for mindfulness from the Center for Mindful Learning. Any questions on employee wellness? Communications, it's one of my things I do well. I started a blog on our website. So when you, now when you come down underneath District, I believe it is, at the very bottom, Wellness. So when you go in there, you'll see some of the highlights of things that are going on. And I like to put things in there that are more community-related to wellness, such as like our supplemental nutrition programs or maybe some. um, such as like our, our supplemental nutrition programs, or maybe something that kind of came up recently, um, that kind of, we want all of our community to, to read about. I do submit to the District Newsletter as well. I try to submit something every month. I started a Twitter account. That was new for me, my first Twitter account. And then I also started a monthly employee newsletter. So, in that newsletter was strictly towards wellness for our employees. And so, that was more about the Zumba classes and other things that are going on through VHI. So, we get a lot of information from VHI, um, activities that our staff can do or things that they can do to keep their wellness going. So, that's where I kind of promote that. And then other initiatives. So, uh, we are a partner with Vermont Safe Routes to School. And that kind of go, that, Winuski is, is unique because we don't have busing. A lot of our students walk to school. It's very important to make sure that those walking routes are defined and safe. So, that's one reason why, um, Safe Routes to School has been kind of a core theme for me to take a look at. So, we'll be partnering with them some more, um, in the future, you know, once we get around whether we're going to have busing or not and, um, just make sure that these, um, students know what routes are good for them to take.
Does that coordinate with the city at all?
I am in, yes, Ray and I have talked a lot and I share information with them. So, for instance, uh, Vermont Safe Routes to School took all of our, um, student data where they live and plotted it on a map so we could see where the higher concentrations are, where, and where would be a safe route. For instance, Weaver Street might be a better path than Main Street, you know? There, there's one idea. Um, how do we get the students across certain streets? How, you know, so I work with Ray and, um, especially that light down by Spring Street, you know?
Yeah.
That's, uh, we don't have a crossing guard down there. And, and it is a busy intersection, so.
It takes rather a cross there. But if, so I'm thinking also that coordinating with the city makes sense because, uh, I wonder if it would be possible to prioritize certain sidewalks over others when it comes to clearing them because.
Yeah, exactly. Yes. At the same time I started this, uh, they started a, um, a survey, a, of a, a walking and biking in Winuski survey. I don't know if you remember that in the fall?
Yeah.
So, I met with Aranthi, who was the person they hired to do that. So, Aranthi and I worked together with Safe Routes to School, um, when we took a look at the maps, yeah.
So, reaching that Bronze Star status, what's that about?
That was just because we took a student tally and we, we, you know, there, there's like a checklist of things that they wanted to do, you know, until we eventually have like walking school buses. So, the idea is that we get to a point where we actually have like a walking school bus. So, you could say at, you know, seven forty, there's going to be somebody who's going to lead students at a certain point, you know, in Winuski, lead them up. So, students are walking together. I mean, ideally, it'd be great if, if they did get on some kind of walking schedule because then you have a group. And when you're walking as a group, it's far more visible than walking one, two, or three students at a time. So, you know, these are things that we look at and we see, are they feasible? And, you know, what are the paths? I didn't realize there was a path that goes through behind, when you go, uh, Teagan Street, you're behind, there's a path. I never knew that. Well, maybe someday we can make that an actual path since it's a straight shot from some of our students on the west side, so. Anyway, future. And I'm learning. Okay, um, another thing that I've been working a lot on is our compliance of Act 148, which is the universal recycling law. So, basically, every two years, there's going to be another thing that we can't send to the landfills, uh, starting this year with recycling, mandatory recycling. In two years, it's going to be mandatory leaf and yard debris. And then by 2020, no food scraps. So, we have to come up with a plan, how are we going to compost? How are we going to divert compost and recycling out of our garbage and into compost bins, recycling? And, and make sure that's really happening here. So, right now, we have recycling bins in our classrooms, but not everybody uses them. And we did a waste audit a couple of weeks ago. We, I had a middle grades classroom, um, one of the arts rotations. We took all ten bags from the ten TAs and we emptied them out. We divvied them up and we found out about fifty percent of that could have been diverted. Only, um, a little more than half of it was true trash, um, most of it was compost. And that's because, if you remember what I said about breakfast, they eat breakfast in the classroom. So, as soon as they're done with those breakfasts, if they don't finish it, it goes in the garbage. So, there's, you know, there's bagels, there's half-eaten apples, there's yogurt, there's milk. All of this is going into the garbage, which is all going to have to be composted. So, we have to come up with a plan, how are we going to get that compost to a composting instead? How are we going to get people to recycle? Because most of that was recycling. A lot of stuff could have been recycled.
I would challenge you to implement far in advance of the state mandated.
Oh, we are.
To, don't, not to wait for it.
So, we've been talking with Chittin and Salad Waste District. And, um, I found, actually, where Sean came from, CBU has beautiful sort stations in their cafeteria. And I want to get those here. I want one for the middle high school and I want one at a smaller level for our elementary students. It may also reduce traffic and flow in our cafeteria when students are leaving because right now, there's only one window that they all go to to dump out their garbage. Um, this might alleviate some of that congestion when the middle school's coming in to get breakfast or lunch and the little kids are trying to get their food thrown away, there's a lot of congestion. So, this may help us in more ways than just complying with, you know, the law. And then kind of along with that, our school garden, community garden, there's a lot going on now that it's spring. Everyone's thinking garden. Um, there's, uh, BYCC, the Vermont Youth Conservation Corps, uh, here. They want to do some work with our gardens. The city wants to do some work with our gardens. So, I've kind of become a focal point to make sure everyone's talking together and working together on that. And then updating our wellness policy is upcoming. I don't know if you guys know, it, last time it was updated was 2006. So, I'll make sure, by the end of this year, I will have that done. Because that, that was a long time ago. Um, so, I kind of alluded to this, the thirty minutes of physical activity for all students. This is a Vermont ruling, I'm not sure, exactly sure how it, uh, fits in there. But basically, it came from the Board of Education or the Agency of Education that students should get thirty minutes of activity, physical activity, every day within our school. We should allow that. It doesn't have to be thirty minutes in one block. It could be five minutes here, ten minutes there, you know? So, it doesn't matter how we do it, we just have to allow them thirty minutes of activity or an opportunity to participate in. I am confident that, um, we're meeting that with SIM. That's, I mean, twenty-five minutes already, plus a little extra movement here or there, they, they get that movement. Um, I'm a little less, uh, sure of the high school because, like I said, the high school, they're so focused on learning and getting all those things done before they graduate that we need to find out how can we help them have some time to participate in some kind of physical activity. Um, and then the elementary school, they, you know, they have their recess times, they have things like that. Um, with the elementary school upcoming this year, Mary and I have talked about, uh, having a recess program where we kind of encourage students to use the track a certain amount of time. So, we're going to do like a mileage club, count up the miles that they walk and then plot that and, you know, see if they walk the long trail or walk across the USA. So, we're coming up with a plan for this spring to, and that encourages them, again, especially those fourth and fifth graders who get outside, they don't want to run and play as much as they used to. We want to encourage them to get out and play and move. And then we have a relationship with, um, Marathon Health recently. Marathon Health is based in the Winuski Mill. It's a, um, it's a company wellness, um, it's a company that brings kind of like employee wellness programs. We don't really need it because of VHI, but they were looking for some volunteering opportunities with us. They want to kind of work with the schools and offer their services with, with the students. So, what we came up with is, uh, we have a, a program where they come, uh, once a month on the, um, late start days and they, uh, do different things with our fourth and fifth graders. We found that that might be kind of a niche where their students are ready to learn about some wellness ideas, but we're not getting into middle and high school, um, learning time. So, they come in and they do things like, uh, they did some extra physical activity. And the last time, they talked about hygiene, you know, washing your hands, why it's important to wash your hands, dental hygiene, things like that. So, um, I also coordinate that with the schools. Is that over twenty minutes?
We're not counting.
There was questions though, so.
So, are there any more questions?
How do you keep up with all that? It's like a big, uh, amount of stuff, there's so much to do.
And then I teach yoga to the students during their SIM time and the PE students. I have a great group of, um, high school students that, when I'm not there, they're like, "We missed you." So, I, I, I get into the classroom a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just such a broad portfolio. It's amazing the sort of breadth of the wellness conception, you know? It's a lot more than, you know.
There are many facets to wellness, many facets. Anything, anything I missed?
Well, but talk just a little bit about, there's a link to prevention in all this, right? In terms of, of, you know, drug use and abuse. Can you say a couple of words about that?
The drug use and abuse?
Yeah, like how, how this sort of is related to the whole prevention piece.
Well, when, when students are active, you know, it, you can keep them out of trouble. How are, you, you have layers of students. You have students who we work with on a daily basis to kind of keep them out of trouble, so to speak. Then you have those students who, they know what they like to do. They're involved in the sports programs, they're involved in, you know, all kinds of activities. They stay very active. So, for us to, and give them these, um, opportunities to either be physically active or to learn about their health, um, helps them make decisions later. Uh, I, I said it earlier, when I came in and I saw the confusion around breakfast, I was like, "Why is this so confusing?" Going in and talking to them, they could, they had someone come in so they could ask questions. "Why do I have to have a fruit? Why do I have to have this?" And then they learn, so that when they go, they're like, "All right, I know I have to take this, I'm going to take it. If I don't want it, I'll put it in the share basket." But I'm seeing less and less in the share basket now. They used to put a lot away and now there's less in it because they kind of have a feeling now, they know what they really like, they know what they have to take. So, it's, it's all about education there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But in terms of preventing them, you know, the more we can do here in the school to keep them busy, like these after-school programs that we have as well, the less likely they're going to be out walking around on the streets and getting into trouble.
Right.
So, it's also true, like, so they explore some of their interests they wouldn't, might not have known they had, like providing more and more opportunities and ways to experience.
Yeah.
Is what you guys are going to be doing a lot of.
Another thing I just wanted, there's a young girl in the middle school who, she doesn't like to do SIM. Doesn't like to do it at all. When I first came here, I tried to encourage her to participate. "No, no, no, I'm not going to participate." Every once in a while, you'll find something she wants to do. And when she does it, she, she loves it. And so, when I see someone who is less likely to be physically active, being physically active, that lifts me up and say, "Okay, how can we bottle that passion that she just found with other students? So, how can we do this with other students?" We gave her an opportunity to try different things, the circuit training. And we do different activities like running or throwing a ball. And we found what she liked to do. So, now, we can do that more with her and that will get her more active and help her own health.
So, I just wanted to finish by tying this all together. You know, we talk about all these programs and we're like, "Great," you know? The reason we're doing it is, uh, as you can see from the, the graphic here, is wellness is such a foundational piece to learning. So, when we have healthy students, we have healthy staff, then we can do really good work around personalized learning plans, project-based learning, student-centered learning, the GXs, and meet those board-prescribed ends. And so, that is why we've dedicated so much resource, uh, to this idea.
And it's really important to support the teachers in their own wellness too because they become role models. You know, that Wellness Day, you know, that gave them an uplift and that trickles down.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, uh, on to, uh, the consent agenda.
Public comments.
Whoop, sorry, public comments. Yes, public comments, sorry. Let's skip down right beyond, see, public? Okay. Uh, consent agenda. Any thoughts? I would accept the motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Uh, any comments? I only had one, uh, thought within that, uh, and that was with the, uh, coming unit ventilator and, uh, selecting a low bidder. I know we've used, for the rest of the unit ventilators we've put in, uh, we've used the same contractor, I think, for all of the others. Uh, is taking the low bidder the right thing?
So, the reason that Rebecca and I, our finance manager, who led this work, are recommending that. We had a, an outside consulting firm, Peterson Consulting Firm, who project managed the preschool renovation last summer. Um, they managed the whole process and we asked them that exam, exact same question and they went through the scope of the work, as was mentioned, and they, uh, you know, did a, a very thorough, uh, look at this, this vendor's, uh, history and everything. And they were very comfortable making the recommendation with the low bidder.
Right, great. I know, the low bidder is nice, low bidder is good, but low bidder is not always the right path, so.
Yep.
Okay, good. Anything else? All right, accept, uh, are all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Aye?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. Uh, seven, introduction.
So, I'd like to invite, uh, Sarah Robb to the table.
Okay.
Yes, it's here.
Yep, yep. Save the front row center for you.
So, uh, I'm really, really excited to introduce you to, uh, who is now officially the JFK principal, effective July one, after the consent agenda was approved, because that was in there. And, and welcome her. And so, I am, uh, I'm going to talk a little bit about the process and tell you a little bit more about Sarah and then she's got some comments and then there's some time for you guys to, uh, for some comments and questions as well. So, uh, in terms of the process, we, we started off, if you remember, um, with about nineteen applications and, uh, some of those were not necessarily viable candidates, so I was able to reduce that down into the, to the teens. Um, then the, the committee, who had, uh, broad representation from around the school, including students, including a parent, um, middle school, uh, and high school teacher, administrative and so forth, support staff. Um, and was thirteen, made up of thirteen people. Uh, evaluated those, those fourteen, fifteen applications, selected seven, uh, candidates to interview. Um, interviews were completed and four were selected, uh, by the committee to move forward to the, to the second round. Uh, the second round was a full day by each candidate here. And they met me at seven o'clock and they were here until after four. And, uh, they met with every group of stakeholder, uh, in, in the organization. They were given a, a tour of the building in the morning by our illustrious, uh, high school students in the I-Lab. Uh, Rainbow and, and Ladanya got to conduct a couple of those tours and meet candidates and give some feedback. And, um, then over the course of the day, you know, they met with support staff. They, uh, had open time in the library where people could, uh, drop in and, and chat with them and ask questions. There was a feedback loop where people could send, uh, feedback to me via email. They could fill out a form that had some specific questions for them and then I, uh, brought all of that feedback together. There had been, uh, an intent to do site visits after that. And, uh, because the competitive nature of these processes and other principalships opening in Chittingning County, uh, I felt that it was important in order to get, uh, a wonderful, uh, new principal to move quickly. And so, we did that. And so, that's why we're here. And so, uh, at the expense a little bit of process, uh, we ended up with a, a wonderful, uh, elementary leader. So, you saw in the packet Sarah's, uh, Sarah's background in terms of, uh, uh, teaching in Charlotte, uh, being an assistant principal in Swanton, uh, also teaching in New York City, uh, has a great breadth of experience in the classroom and in, uh, uh, four or five years in, in leadership positions, these last couple down in Pittsburgh at Lothar Elementary. And she brings, uh, great experience, particularly in the last couple of years, around some things that we're really working on, um, around, uh, multi-tiered, uh, systems of support and how do we coordinate those support services pre-K-12 for our students? Um, she, uh, she's done a lot of work on, um, PBIS and behavioral supports. And, uh, so it's a really nice skill set match for us, uh, I believe. And, um, so I'm just, I'm really, really excited to, to have Sarah joining us.
Yay. Welcome, welcome.
Really know how to follow up with that one. Um, so, as Sean said, I did start in New York City teaching, I don't know, a long time ago. Um, and came back to Vermont where I'm originally from and have been in Pittsburgh for two years. And, um, it's a fabulous school. It's an hour and fifteen minutes from my house. So, um, I always said I would never look until the perfect job opened up, um, and this one did. So, it was the only one I had applied for. Um, and Sean's quickness, it was the only one I did apply for. Um, so I'm really excited. It really, to me, feels like a great culmination of all my years in education. It's a super diverse community, which I've missed since leaving New York City. Um, the mindfulness, I mean, the kids asked me what.
Um, the mindfulness, I mean, the kids asked me what my favorite mindfulness was activity when they interviewed me, and I, singing really loudly in my car, which apparently wasn't on the, like, mindfulness list for them, but they took it.
They're so gracious.
They were. So I was, I mean, I was interviewed by everybody. Um, the fourth grade interviewed me, the fifth grade interviewed me, parents and parents and teachers, and, um, the high schoolers really did a phenomenal job touring me and showing me some of the projects, their independent learning projects that they've been working on. Um, they were very, very impressive. So I walked away that first day, and, um, I've told Sean my first call's always to my mother, even though I'm forty, and said, I really think this could be a great fit for me, and, um, that I'd really, you know, I really think I wanna go for this. Um, so once I tell my mother, that's usually when it happens. Um, so in, in the interview process, especially that first interview, talking to the staff and asking them about what was going on, that PBIS piece, and, um, the day that I was walking around and talking to staff and kids about what they really thought, um, were needs in JFK, that tier-two, multi-tiered system of support was really strongly identified, uh, by the staff, which was a nice fit for me, having done that in two schools already. Um, so, you know, overall, it just really feels like a good fit, um, for me with all of those pieces. I had stuff written down, but I forgot. So do you guys have questions for me?
We have a tendency of having people come in, fall in love, and stay, so.
That's okay.
That's one of our goals, isn't it?
That would be really nice.
And it is with a diverse community, that, that I think is, is part of the allure of, of our district, is having it all in one house.
Yeah. Well, and having everything in one building, um, is, you know, that I didn't even really think about when I applied, but when I came for the interview and I left, and I thought, everybody is right there. How, I mean, you can't get a more perfect situation than to have your superintendent down the hall and your business managers.
You really have to work at leveraging it, though. We have, well, we have, I, I say it a little bit tongue-in-cheek, but we have historically been three schools. Under one roof, but the walls are there. And they've started to come down, and I think that is a key piece as we move forward, is to make sure that that continues, that it is one continual educational stream with no barriers as you move through, so.
It's wonderful, 'cause it's not just for the adults, 'cause it's generally the adults that sort of have the, but now kids are starting to cross the barriers, and, and it's so nice to hear that in high school, kids had access to hire, you know, and a part of the process of hiring an elementary school teacher, which a lot of them went through, and so it becomes something that they really honor and care about and are interested in what's gonna be happening.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah.
So another part to this in the next, uh, you know, upcoming months is that, um, Mary, Sarah, Mary Rourke, Sarah and I will be very thoughtful and intentional about the transition. And that Sarah will come to visit a couple of times and be with Mary, with the, the faculty and staff at JFK and kids, and get to know people, and, uh, you know, I think that's a really important part of the process for people to see that.
Be a familiar face in the file, which would be key to a lot of kids. Yeah, well, the kids, one of them said, you need to learn everyone's name by the first day of school. I'm sure that's actually gonna happen, but I'll try really hard.
So in the meantime, you're still commuting?
I am. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so now, now I have to assist with the principal search down there to replace me.
Yeah.
It's kind of one foot in both places. But it's okay. The staff has been really supportive down there, and I've said, like, you've been great, but we knew we wouldn't keep you forever, so. Too far.
Far.
Yeah.
Stability is something that, uh, is key, so.
Yeah.
You can certainly sympathize with them for losing a good principal, but.
They've been really good.
We'll take it. Awesome. Well, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. I'm excited.
Put a, put a face to a name.
Yeah, well, and that's, I mean, I'm sure board meetings are fun, but, you know, Sean goes to them and I go to the great.
We'll see at the retreats.
That's okay.
It wasn't long.
You're always welcome.
It wasn't long ago you would have been required.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, just last year, actually, right?
No, two.
Two years.
Two years, two years.
Time flies when you're having fun, right?
It hasn't happened since '07.
That's right.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet everybody.
My pleasure. Okay, awesome. Check that one. Uh, alright, uh, so governance processes, uh, we'll go with the, um, student report to the board.
Oh, yes.
Uh, if you'll hold for just one second. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Alright, so I'll begin first. Um, so I hope everyone enjoyed the warm weather recently. Uh, spring is probably on the way, but, you know, it's Vermont, we'll never know. It could get colder and snow again, which is probably gonna happen, but, um, students are now well-rested and, uh, have enjoyed their time away from school, but now we're all back to learn after coming back from our second winter vacation. Um, so I'll begin with Aspirations Day, which was a big hit with our high school students, once again, for the second year in a row. Um, Aspirations Day, for all of you who do not know, it is a day where, um, Winuski High School students are able to, um, listen on a keynote, a youth motivational speaker, and then they are led into, um, some fun events about college. And then we get to learn about different topics, such as different career fields, different colleges, programs available to high school students, and, um, how to be a suc- successful adult. Uh, there are different panels for these kind of things. So the day began with listening to an amazing youth motivational speaker named Lehman Hicks, whose, um, speech and presentation was fantastic and very engaging with the students. He also gave the students an inspirational message, which was, get up, get out, and go get it. So if you were to really aspire to achieve or a goal that you want to do or, um, achieve in the future, then you have to get up, get out, and go get it. So that was Aspiration Day. Um, if you've been walking around the high school hallways, there have been new displays up for the arts. Um, Art One has been displaying some calendars that have been, um, very amazing and beautiful pieces of art. And there are different kinds of themes that go along with the different students, who have their own style of drawing for their calendars. So, and a big part of this student report was the student-faculty basketball game, which occurred yesterday evening. Featuring our very own Sean McManon, who, um, surprisingly destroyed us that game. The faculty only won, faculty only won by two points.
Two points.
And you know what? We could've won that.
Rush.
Get up, get out, go get it, next time.
Teachers are always bragging, thinking they're all cool and stuff, and, eh, we can win that, piece of cake.
Is it, is this a trend, or is this like a first?
This is a yearly thing where, um, the faculty and students.
I don't know, we haven't lost since I've been here.
They don't, this faculty desert usually does.
They don't, huh?
That's 'cause they cheat.
Ah, who's the ref?
It's not the refs, it's the scoreboard keepers, who are students.
And the refs were students.
Yeah, and the refs.
The calls did not go our way.
I don't know. I don't know, I don't know.
Okay, and also.
There's always next year.
Yep, yeah, we're gonna win that. Okay.
Persevere, they say, in the school.
Mm-hmm. Um, there are also, um, a few small fundraisers, um, during that game. The prom committee raised, uh, seventy, an extra seventy dollars for their budget, um, from a fifty-fif- fifty, fif- fifty, fifty raffle, uh, during the game, and so far they have raised a total of three hundred thirty dollars for prom. Uh, that fifty-fifty raffle, uh, had it so that seventy dol- half of it would go to the prom committee, and the other half would go to the winner of the raffle, and so a lucky winner got to win seventy dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they will also be having fundraiser at Papa Frank's on the twenty-fifth, where a certain amount of proceeds from that day will be given to the committee. And early prom tickets will go on sale on April first. Singles will cost twenty dollars, and couples will cost forty dollars. And, um, the prom committee is also planning to host a prom fashion show to showcase what students could wear during prom. So this is the, will be the second annual prom fashion show. Last year's was a pretty big hit with the students, and it's quite funny to see some of our very own peers dress up, look fancy, look nice.
So, so the teachers aren't gonna do it from their years, like from the eighties and nineties and two thousands of fashion?
No, but we did have.
Great idea.
We had a presentation once where they showcased all the old, uh, yearbook photos of some teachers.
And we got to see a few, um, student, teacher, uh, not students, teachers that we all loved in prom clothing during their teenage years.
That's fun.
Um, also, uh, Student Council has also raised some money from the admissions from that game, and just raising a good amount of money to keep going with their funds. Uh, sports, uh, basketball season is now over. The boys went on to the second round, and their second round, they faced Williamstown, who they defeated earlier in the season and broke their winning spree. But unfortunately, they cannot beat them again, and they lost. Um, girls lost in the first round of, um,
Playoffs.
Playoffs, and now basketball season is over, and athletes are now resting, because track season and along with baseball and softball season will be starting up soon. Informational meetings for all three of those sports have been held around this week, and for middle school will be coming up in the next few days or week. And so sports will definitely keep on going. There will be a middle school dance on March thirteenth, and there will also be a new American Red Cross babysitter training workshop at the O'Brien Community Center on March fourteenth, which is a Saturday. This is a program in which students, uh, aged eleven to fifteen are able to learn about, um, becoming a babysitter and what it's like to work in that kind of just career where it's taking care of younger children. And it's a free program for them, and for students who are interested, they can get some flyers in the office and go to the O'Brien Community Center and learn about it.
The effective communications classes start the first day of mentoring, uh, with the elementary on Monday. So ten students are spread all throughout the different elementary grades. The program's gonna run about three months, and so the first day was anticipated greatly, and it was very successful. I had a lot of fun, so I'm a part of it, so. Uh, the elementary put on a play of Charlie and the Chocolate Factory on March sixth, it was very successful, and a lot of good reviews. Uh, it was, the cast was fourth and fifth graders, and they performed twice for the elementary, and again at six-thirty for everyone else. Uh, March fourteenth is the last audition date for celebrating Winuski's talent show. The additions start at ten AM, and the show will be held on April tenth from sixty-eight at RPAC. Uh, Winuski, the Winuski High School and Burlington High School has rescheduled their trip to go to Pittsfield, New Hampshire for the Partnership for Change and Parent for Change site visit. They'll be going on March seventeenth and eighteenth. Students from here is Rainbow, uh, Musa Mayenge, Enes Rosovich, and Ree Bassam. Uh, St. Patrick's Day is March seventeenth, so we're green. Uh, the middle school and the high school orchestra, co- chorus and band has a concert on March nineteenth. On March twenty-sixth, there will be a sleep out held at the Burlington Church.
Universal Church?
Universal Church, to help raise awareness and money for the homelessness. Uh, Mr. McManon, Mr. McManon is helping to coordinate, so if you have any questions, please do mine.
And that's to benefit Spectrum Youth and Family Services.
Uh, the Boston trip is coming soon, uh, the, uh, bunch of, uh, different business classes, uh, with Ms. Paquette. Uh, selected students will be going on April seventh. Uh, Rainbow Chan has beaten the old typing record of ninety-two words per minute.
What?
With her own score of ninety-nine words per minute, and she's hoping to beat that as well.
It's nothing. It's unacceptable.
Ninety-nine? What are you, what are you shooting for?
Um, over a hundred.
Hundred and twenty? Yeah?
She's battling Mr. Dunn.
Yeah.
French teacher.
My TA teacher. How much can he, how, what's his?
Mr. Dunn, um, so the typing test, it's, um, there's definitely a difference between, like, thinking and typing from your unconscious, unconsciousness, and, um, thinking from, by reading off and typing. So you type slower when you're reading off that, but Mr. Dunn has a score of like a hundred twenty-one words per minute, and I believe two, three mistakes. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm coming up there. Um, Ms. Paquette has a score of one hundred six words per minute, and, um, I currently have a score of ninety-nine words per minute, but I'm.
It'd be interesting to have, have, like, even adults take that, like, it'd be interesting to know how many words you can type.
A lot of the teachers have taken it, and it's very funny.
They're probably not as fast as you think they are.
Some, some teachers have the classic chicken type.
Some people are good at that.
And some teachers have the.
Going back in the day, they actually taught taking like that.
Right.
That's how I learned it, was not looking and.
Absolutely.
I don't do the pecking.
Uh, elementary report cards are going out on March twentieth. Uh, the annual twenty-third annual fundraiser will be held on March twentieth as well, from four-thirty to six-thirty. The yearbook committee has had their last fundraiser on Tuesday during the student-faculty game. They've raised over four thousand dollars, which was their goal, so.
Say that again?
Four thousand dollars.
For what?
Uh, yearbook committee.
Oh, great.
Yeah, that was their goal, so they're set. Uh, the JFK kids will be heading to the Ellie Long Music Center on March twenty-third to watch the Central Vermont Chamber of Festival Musicians, which are very jolly stuff. And just to wrap it up, hoping for spring.
Today was a good start.
Yeah, good job.
Alright, great. Uh, Rainbow, if I could ask, uh, for our April meeting, if you could, um, bring back a little bit of a summary of your trip to.
Yes, definitely.
Pittsfield. That would be awesome, just to hear what it is you're doing and how things are going.
Mm-hmm.
That'd be great. Great. Um, so then we're policies. Um, got two new policies to review. Got three, got graduation discussion, okay. Um, so on the hazing policy? Thoughts, comments? Have we, uh, historically had any issues with hazing on campus?
Uh, no, not, I mean, not since I've been here.
Yeah.
That I've, yeah. We haven't had any official hazing.
That I can remember.
Yeah.
Great. I feel like, uh, our policy looks pretty good.
I feel like we just picked this policy not too long ago.
Yeah, it's, we're following in the order of age since we last touched them, so that might be a good.
Is that what you're saying?
I think it was eleven, two thousand and eleven.
Um, one question I had is just, uh, do you believe that from what you've seen, that coaches are properly apprised of?
Yes.
What they need.
Yep, Dennis does a nice job of, of his, uh, coaches' meetings, uh, before every season, of, uh, making them aware of all the appropriate policies and procedures.
Okay. The one question I have is a super detailed, um, editing kind of thing, is after all the examples that says, "Hazing shall not include any activity or conduct, or conduct, rather, that furthers the legitimate curricular extracurricular military training program goals, provided that the goals are approved by the school board of the district, and provided that the activity or conduct furthers those goals in a manner that is appropriate, contemplated by the school board, and normally customary for similar public school programs." Yeah, I think the example in there covers it. It, it did, yeah, and I, I mean, it's quite a sentence, but I, uh, I, I feel like the, the legitimate in there is a little bit confusing. Like, is there, is there ever gonna be, like, an illegitimate curricular goal that's approved by the school board over and over again? Oh, just the word legitimate itself, 'cause I think that pertains mostly to, like, sports teams and sprints and, you know, other mandatory conditioning stuff, right? Um. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I just can't imagine, and it just seems redundant to have.
Why don't I check that out with VSBA, a little bit, 'cause it is in the model policy, word for word, as well as our local policy.
Yeah.
To see if there's, uh, 'cause I'm not sure if there's, maybe there's a deeper story behind that.
I wonder, 'cause it's just sort of made me think, what is this, you know, what is it, what is it covering? What does it mean that, that I don't understand, 'cause why would anything be? Might it be illegitimate? If it's approved by the school board to begin with.
Yeah.
Okay. But, other than that, I mean, it's just a detail. I thought, I thought reading down it, down through it, that the, the state version added staff persons under the disciplinary action piece. Uh, I just thought the proceed, the procedures in the, in the state model seem to just be a little bit crisper. Yep. But the, I like the, the header on, on our piece, I don't know, that there's, I think they were about the same.
Yeah, they're pretty much.
Pretty much verbatim, but I think the procedures were a little bit cleaner in the, in the state model. Okay.
Yeah, the only d- other detail that I had was, in the local policy, it's talks, talks specifically about principal, and then the model policy, it's more generic, and it says school administrator. So I'd like to have it say school administrator in our local policy, 'cause that gives us a little more breadth to designate different administrators to. So I'd like to have it say school administrator in our local policy, cause that gives us a little more breadth to designate different administrators to to, to do this work.
Athletic director or something like that.
Right.
And again, I think I, I can appreciate the comments, cause when we go down through these, it's easy to look down through it and say, yeah, it sounds good. But I really wanna make sure that if we have somebody, we're in executive session, we're reading down through the policy that somebody apparently violated or is claimed to have been violated, to have violated it, we need to be able to make sure that it's clean enough that we don't have uh too many gaps and ambiguity in between, so appreciate the, appreciate the com- comments.
And I will um as usual um do the double check on the legal and cross references. There's already one uh policy five one four oh that is uh I think was shifted into procedures when the policy governance transitioned. So I'll clean all those up for the second reading.
So, um that'll be good. We will approve, we don't, we're discussion tonight, any other discussion on the hazing piece? Well, that'll approve through a consent agenda next time, as is customary. Alright, um, uh board member conflict of interest, always a good one to talk about when you're talking about yourselves. Any upfront comments, thoughts? In, in what ends up being page ten of the, of the governance process, uh just one item here and, and we've had, we've run into it a couple of times since I've been on and that is abstaining from voting if there's something that could be a conflict of interest for you. So you just don't be bashful about bringing those up. Yep, absolutely, and you know, and especially in your, in your case with the childcare piece and potential for interaction there, so yeah, that's, don't, don't hesitate to bring it up. It's always good to be on the front. Um, interesting that our current version though has a, a set of procedures in it.
Yeah.
Typically, the policy is the policy and the procedures are how things are run by the district, uh or you know, how, how the administrative team handles it underneath. By its very definition, board member conflict of interest, I don't think we have a procedure section in here. I think the whole thing is, which the state model is, that, that's what the state model, model is. There, there is no procedure section in there, you know, so they're, they're organizing the, the implementation, the avoidance, avoiding conflict complaints of the conflict of interest. So it's laid out where the procedures are wrapped right into the policy and it is just a policy. So I think, to me, that seems like uh the better, I, I think the top version, the top piece of ours, like all others, I think was written more personably, I think, or, or better, but I think the procedures we wanna wrap in the policy itself.
Yep.
So the, yeah, they call it implementation, right, and, and the language is the same, but somehow we call it procedures and they call it implementation?
Yeah, I think, and, and historic, as, as far as I've seen, procedures are, we state the policy as a board and procedures are how the staff is gonna handle it.
Right.
In, in this case here, it's us.
We just need the policy.
I shouldn't be writing the procedures.
Right.
For this one.
Right, but yeah, right, right, but, but I mean the, what.
All, everything is the same, right?
Yeah, they just, the, the title.
Titles, yeah.
So that, that makes sense.
Just laid out differently, so it's clean across the board.
And actually, the way it's laid out, that implementation bit is a little easier on the eyes from the version that we have.
So are we deciding which one we're taking? Is that?
Yeah, yeah, I guess, uh I, I guess my recommendation might be to take the top piece, the current process description of the current one we have, but meld it with the state piece in the, in that format.
Although, yeah, yeah, ours has a little more detail on a couple of those procedure pieces, which are, like you said, they're not actually procedures, they're policies.
Right, maybe taking that entire section, just putting it under an implementation header.
Yeah.
Right, or uh, you know, that, just moving it under the header.
Yeah.
Cause you're right, I, I think ours was a little more detailed uh in the, what the procedures were.
Yeah.
So maybe that's it, just rearranging the headers so that there avoids procedures.
So in what I'm hearing is then in, in the local policy, uh changing the procedures title on the second page to implementation and maybe keeping that first sentence from the implementation in the VSBA that says in order to comply with the obligations. Then keeping the one through uh nine A or B two, B three.
Yeah, yeah.
And then also adding avoiding conflicts in the bottom part of the VSBA model.
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, uh aimed mostly, I think, at just getting rid of the procedures for clarity.
Yep.
Right, well, and, and in fact, and I mean, it'll be the, the, the complaints of conflict of interest and the state policy are, we, you know, we call that one of our procedures. So nine A B one two three is, you know, the bottom of the.
That's the complaints conflict of.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think it is just sort of header shifting for the most part.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, so I think mostly just cleaning out the, the procedure piece of it, just to, to remove that.
I was gonna say, they're very similar.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, that's the only difference is
Right.
Their titles and ours is under procedure.
Yeah. Yeah, it may be more semantics than anything, but I think it just keeps it clean. Okay. Work?
Yep.
Alright. Okay, um discussion around graduation requirements policy.
So let me tee this up a little bit.
Yeah, I was gonna.
Um, so what's happening with the, with the new uh ed quality standards rules that were adopted last April? Um, it was included in there that uh all school di- districts needed to have a local graduation requirements policy. With all of the change that's happening around proficiency-based graduation, the agency and VSBA have yet to put out a model. So in talking with the VSBA, they counseled uh me to pass on kind of two options. They think it's okay to kind of remain in the situation that we're in right now and wait for a model policy to come out. Uh, or we could polish the existing one up and, and just re-adopt it because it was taken out in the, in the transition to policy governance and put into procedures.
Even though it was required?
Yes.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't know how that happened, whether it was dismissed, or at that point, it may not have been I'm not sure if it was required at the point in which you made that transition. So, uh that, that's kind of the decision point, I think, for the board, is do you, you know, do you hold tight? And um kinda wait for that model policy from VSBA and the agency? Or do you um wanna polish this up a little bit and, and just put it back on the books? Um, so that you're in compliance.
So if, with basically the recommendation, if we just sort of hold tight, we're not in compliance, because it's not, then?
Cause the rules currently say that you, that you have to have a local graduate, or graduation requirements policy in place. Yep.
A board body.
We, we, yeah, and so what we really have is we have a policy on graduation requirements that was moved to procedures, so we have it.
So we just need to move it back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I recommend we do that.
Yeah, go ahead. Well, I'm just curious if um if, if this like hamstrings you at all from doing creative stuff with the curriculum, I mean.
Exactly.
The, the only, the, so the only change that I would recommend is uh at the bottom of number one, distribution of courses shall meet the requirements is outlined. I would change that language from the framework of standards and learning opportunities to the education quality standards. Which, that, which, when you, the education quality standards state the ability to graduate students based on proficiencies.
Yeah, right, right.
Or Carnegie units. So it gives you the flexibility to do either.
So that's what, that's what the, the, say, say the, the phrase of the standards is?
Uh, so the ed quality standards gives you the ability to either graduate students on proficiency or Carnegie units.
Okay, great. Great, cause I, yeah, so I, I think it sounds like Mike and I are on the same page, about, I mean, if I see seven, seven, seven and three, that, that feels sort of restrictive.
Right, knowing that this is gonna come right back to this table sometime next year.
Yeah.
And there is a lot of other policies coming out of the New England Secondary School Consortium and other regional um groups. So there's a lot of work that's being done. We can bring that back and look at it and um I'm sure that there will be a recommendation coming out of um the school to the board.
Okay. Uh my, my point was exactly yours. I don't want to have a policy in place that we consciously ignore to do the right thing.
Right, right.
I, I wanna make sure that this doesn't get in a way of doing the right thing for, for the education and a, a change to, to something better. So, if, if this gets in the way, or if there's something in here that uh we can't live with, rather than working around it, we'll bring it back in and modify it if we have to.
Yeah.
I also really hate to take something somebody else has written that's gonna prescribe or prescribe what we do rather than having it fit what we need or really believe we wanna do, so. Keep that flexibility in your mind and not averse to understanding what we wanna do, writing a policy around it and then figure out how it fits with the rest of the
Right.
The state.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I don't wanna follow, right, if we don't have to.
Right.
So if we put ed quality standards in there, does that afford enough flexibility or, yeah?
Yep.
Okay.
So, we, we did not list it as a first reading in this agenda. So what I'd recommend is we put it back on the agenda next month as a first reading and I'll bring a draft that includes the ed quality standards and I'll bring all the backup so you can see that. And uh, you know, that will be the first reading and then we can polish it up and it could be back on the books in, in May.
Okay.
Alright.
Excellent.
Alright, anything else there? Like, again, the, the last thing I wanna do is consciously break policy, but I don't want us to be stagnant where we are.
Right, and we'd be the ones breaking it.
Right, right, that's, yes. Very good. Alright, eight C legislative update.
Alright.
Did you need a second to finish it?
No, I'm good.
Uh yeah, so lots and lots of uh activity and discussion here. Interesting to see where it's gonna go, but I there's gonna be a need for some involvement to, to drive this, I think. We're seeing two different versions running through, one in the House and one in the Senate. They seem to be, to me anyway, to be um together, very um restrictive, I think is probably a minor way to put it. They're looking at uh one version saying a two percent increase or more is. So I went through some of the math with our budget, just to give you an idea what two percent represents. Health benefits only, without anything else, is one point eight percent this year.
Whoa.
Increase.
Students, uh because it's based on equalized students, if you take our student population down, out of the equalized students of nine twenty-six, down fourteen, that's just under two percent. So just student pop- and last year, our student population moved from eight ninety to nine twenty-five. So we had twice that, that would be almost a, a three and a half to three point eight percent swinger, just in a stu- equalized student movement.
And that's just to keep up with what you have without adding anything new. I mean, that's not, that's status quo.
To stay under the two percent, you're consuming it with something other than salaries without even starting.
So we'd have to what, stop paying our teachers anymore and raise it?
Well, no, there's, there's, you know, you go above it, there's uh becomes penalties.
The, the way it's written right now is, is it, it um, you wouldn't get any money from the state if you were above two percent.
So
The, the budget would not be considered even, um, I don't think you could even put it out to the community.
Right, so.
It says fail.
Yeah, it's considered failed, right.
So I guess we have to be proactive and just how do we go getting our voices heard on this ish, issues as children?
Yeah, so the other two pieces then, that kind of work, I, I mean, if you start thinking through, going through a negotiation session, knowing the two percent, then there's also in the other version, a no-strike, no-imposition. And what I wanted to talk to you about for brief discussion is the, is the
Binding arbitration.
Requirement for the binding interest arbitration. I don't really understand what that is, but, so, you know, with no-strike, no-imposition, binding arbitration in a two percent cap. There seems to be a lot of conflict in that, so having you be our local expert in the conflict or resolution thereof, could you just help briefly with binding interest arbitration and what?
Uh, it's not exactly my expertise, um, but, I mean, a binding interest arbitrator is someone who will sort of act as a mediator until he or she gets tired of the conversation and then makes a decision.
Just somebody else.
When you sit down with the binding interest arbitrator, they have the right to make the final call. I mean, it's a judge, basically, you, you, you're kind of you, you're, you're negotiating in front of a judge and then he or she will make the call. When he or she decides that you guys have not made enough progress and, or, or you have, but you can't resolve it and he or she will, you know.
Resolve it for you.
Yeah, and it's a little different, I mean, in terms of the practice than a regular mediator, whose power comes from having no power, because, because they don't have the power to decide. You're not trying to pitch to, you're not trying to convince the mediator that you're right, you're trying to have a discussion with the other person. If you had a, a binding arbitrator there, uh you would be pitching to the arbitrator the whole time and trying to prove your case, basically. It'd be more like a kind of advocacy kind of approach rather than a dialogue kind of approach.
So it's gonna benefit one party over the other?
Who knows, it'll change the tone of the discussion. You know, it sounds like you guys have reached a pretty good tone at this point with your teachers. Uh if, if, if you were to go in front of an arbitrator, you know, I think you'd see the, the tone change significantly.
You start at a different position to try to end up at a different middle.
Yeah, right, right, and, and I mean, just, it's not a collaborative thing. I mean, it's more of an antagonistic thing if you're with an arbitrator cause you're trying to show that the other guy's wrong and that you're right, and so it's a, it would be.
Who came up with this bill?
Uh, still moving, so it's, it's not by any means final at this point, but.
I suspect this has to do with South Burlington?
No, no, not in, in, in general, I think the, and Sean, correct me if, my, my understanding is what they're really after is trying to find a way to control property taxes. The, the issue with the property taxes is uh they're rising too high. And it, with a district that has been in the spend, in the lower ten percent, tenth percentile of, of spending in the state per equalized student.
Right.
We're being punished for that.
Right, fiscal responsibility.
Fiscal responsibility over the past bunch of years, right, so we're
Yeah.
I, I, that, that's the part that I have heartburn with, is that we've been so frugal and so, you know, tight to what we have for the budget.
I don't see how they can.
A two percent cap is tough.
Expect this to work.
Yeah.
With, unless they're going to take over the pay of teachers and all, and all of that goes with that, that's.
Well, and the, the VSBA has done some research on other states that um either have required binding arbitration or they use binding arbitration. And um their position based on that research is that it wouldn't be good for Vermont because it's not going to allow for um more innovative um negotiation practices
Right.
and really get to um the heart of property taxes and the pressure that everybody's feeling. Um, and that it's, it's kind of uh, um, somebody described it as fact-finding process, but the, but the arbitrator has the power to make the decision.
Right.
So what do fact-finders do? They look at local comps, you know, and then they kind of average those things and they, you know, and they come up with a number.
Yeah.
So that doesn't really allow for real innovation around healthcare costs, around looking at salaries in a different way and, and structuring contracts differently.
Yeah.
So VSBA's position is that it's, it's not a, it's not a good thing.
Would that also tend to limit our ability to, to move towards flexible pathways? When the contract's gonna be a part of it in terms of scheduling and time, as we're looking to sort of open up
Yeah.
the whole idea of.
It could, but I think it gets to Julian's point of what the, the, the environment that it creates, that becomes another bargaining chip.
Yeah.
It's not good for the whole structure of, with this community of the school. And it's not gonna be good for the students ultimately.
Right.
Right. It's probably not good for the relationship between the negotiators, which means it's probably not good for the outcome.
And when you've got, so you've got that, which is H seventy-six, which talks about no-strike, no-imposition and binding arbitration. And then you've got the two percent in H three sixty-one. So if you have required binding interest arbitration and you have a two percent cap, it's gonna be really hard to make traction in negotiations. And it's gonna be really hard, from my perspective, it's really gonna be really hard to craft budgets that are gonna serve kids well.
You're gonna have to cut.
When you've got that cap and, you know, when you can't come to an agreement, you're going to bind the interest arbitration, which is not gonna come, you know, it's gonna come with a pretty uh um comparable number to what's happening around Chittney County in terms of percentages.
Yeah, although they, I mean, seen from a certain light, they both strike me as efforts to limit what teachers can ask for in their contracts. You know, you can't ask for much of a raise if you have a two percent cap, you can't ask for, uh, and, and, and boards, I mean. It's, and I guess that's the idea, right, so it's, it's aimed at keeping boards and teachers from asking for a whole lot more. it's, and I guess that's the idea, right, so it's, it's aimed at keeping boards and teachers from asking for a whole lot more. I mean, you can't, you can't get a new line, you can't get, uh, X percent raise, you can't get any new stuff. Because, because the arbitrator would, I presume, take into account the legislation and say, oh, two percent cap, sorry, what you're asking for is not legal, therefore, you're not getting that, you know, or.
That's a good question, I don't know if they would take that into account.
And that's, but even that, that's what I'm thinking of, but doing that is, means you're gonna be cutting programs because if you're going to come to an agreement and you decide, and the arbitrator decides the teachers do deserve a raise that doesn't go over the two percent cap, but yet our budget is not going to fall within that, we're going to have to cut
Mm-hmm.
programs, which is going to hit the students hard, so.
Which was the other V S B A research, it said other states that have done this have not fared particularly well.
Yeah.
Right, for that reason.
How do we get involved to get our voices heard because obviously we don't want the just to pass?
Yeah. Well, we, we have gotten involved.
Why?
So our, one of our reps, yeah, Deanna Gonzalez is on the, um, I forget the name of the committee, Military and something else.
General.
And that's where H seventy-six i- is coming out of. Um, so both Mike and I have weighed in on seventy-six and three sixty-one, uh, cons- in consultation with V S B A and their positions, um, to Clem and, um, Deanna. This week is really important because crossover and the end of this week, and so if, if anything's going to happen, um, it's gotta make it out by the end of this week. And, um, you know, Shap Smith's been in the press saying that this is still one of the top priorities.
Yeah.
Um, yep, and so in the top four or five, I think.
Okay, I was, I, I thought I had seen something today that I had heard him say, top three priorities, cleanup of the lake. But this wasn't one of the top three.
Hmm, well, I didn't see it today, I saw it a few days ago and I think there was five of them and then.
So we don't need to make phone calls or anything?
Well, I think we're gonna have to stay very active and I don't, I, um, I hate to condemn somebody else's efforts without a pathway or a, a thought on how to do something different, but I just
Yeah.
I, you know, I'm stumped on that, I can certainly advocate, I certainly don't mind advocating for our position and what we just talked about.
Yeah.
Um, I'm really stumped when it comes to what are the alternatives, 'cause, you know, for property taxes statewide, that's a broad
Yeah.
broad category of things to.
Well, and isn't sort of healthcare, uh, the, the great unknown here, I mean, as, as we move forward and, and the healthcare system begins to change either because of the state or because of the federal government, that's gonna impact one way or another, right? I mean, if we can control healthcare costs at the federal level, I mean, we sort of pay the brunt of our crazy healthcare system through our property taxes when we have to pay for teachers' health benefits that balloon
Right.
because of the system that we have, so, uh, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was one thought I had, I mean, just a statewide, at least health benefit package that is the same, at least it's a known.
Interesting, interesting.
At least it's a known, and, and you negotiate that as a known.
Right.
Rather than having all of these different levers, but, and I don't know what kind of options those are available, but.
Boy, that would be interesting, that would change negotiations, huh?
Well, it takes one key lever out.
Yeah.
Um, at least at the local level.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it also puts a constant in the state's hands that says, at least I know what this number is, I've negotiated it for the next three years and this is
Making plans for that, yeah.
But.
Well, and I wonder if that would do extra leverage with healthcare companies and, you know, if you knew, everybody's gonna be subscribed to one kind of plan.
Right.
V S B A doesn't have, uh, a set of recommendations that we can jump on board with?
And they've, they've, they've done the analysis between the different plans that are offered on the exchange
Uh-huh.
and there's a tremendous amount of money to be saved.
That's for health.
For health.
Specifically.
Yep.
But in terms of like, so that's, that's, that's a big piece of the cost puzzle, right, and do they have?
It is.
Yeah.
The challenge is like, y- you know, when you brought up South Burlington, is that was on the table and
That's the reaction.
There is reticence on the side of Vermont N E A to, to open that door.
Yeah, yeah. Does, does V S B A have sort of larger legislative policy recommendations for, for cost control?
I haven't really seen specifics, though I think Steve Dale has alluded to having some other recommendations, I can dig into that and find out what those are.
I think you're right, if we just say no, that's a less interesting position than saying, no, and.
This, yeah.
Right. Yeah, again, complaining and not having an alternative is just complaining.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
That works well in our national government.
It does, but it doesn't move you forward as, as witnessed by said
Yes.
entity.
Yeah.
So. So we can, uh, we can try to stay as, as vociferous as we can, um, and see where we can go, but there's definitely gonna be a lot of movement in the next month, I would have to think.
Is there a proposed time of voting on this?
It'll be by the end of the session, what's that, early May?
Yeah, the end of the session, but it's gotta make it, it's gotta make it through crossover, which is the end of this week.
What's crossover?
Uh, House and Senate.
Senate. They gotta, they gotta pass bills so they take.
Yeah, so they got the big board with, you know, they got eighty or a hundred bills on there, and then they're really deciding which ones are they gonna narrow it down to now.
We, we've been invited, or Sean's been invited, but.
Oh, good, I'll go.
That was one of the subjects to talk about when we get down here and see what we, what we do with that.
Right, and I was at a regional superintendent's meeting yesterday and I don't, I don't know if I'll go or not 'cause there was a lot of representation there who were already set up to be going and testifying with the same messages. I mean, the other thing in H three sixty-one that we haven't talked about, because really the, 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 the two percentage, um, uh, cap is the big one that everybody's up in arms about, um, is the consolidation piece. And the language in there is, um, K twelve integrated systems of eleven hundred students or more. It does have a lot more language than last year's drafts about, uh, waivers and proposals. And I think that we're a wonderful candidate for waivers and proposals, it talks about governance and the work that, uh, you all have done on governance is, is becoming a model for the state, so that would be a, a, a great way to, uh, to further a waiver, um, of the uniqueness of our community. So I, I.
And, and the fact that we've got a, uh, some changes in our educational model that are moving forward are recognized.
Yep, so that one doesn't, it doesn't worry me very much that all of a sudden, uh, you know, the, uh, legislation, uh, and then whoever is, is, uh, has to meet that out, the Agency of Education, the State Board of Ed, is gonna be coming after us to consolidate with somebody.
Yeah.
I think that in the prioritization, we probably would not be at the top of the list.
We'd be far below the center, I believe, and we're classified as a large district in the state, so.
Yes.
That's just funny.
After all you hear, right? Look at their classifications, that's where we sit.
Yeah, but it is important to know that that's in there, you know, so they are addressing it through a governance and a consolidation lens as well, or trying to.
Go show improvement, creativity and, uh, cohesiveness, I guess, more than anything else.
Yeah.
I think that piece can
Yeah, through our proficiency work, through policy governance, I think we have a really good argument to say that we're a, a cohesive K twelve integrated system with a little bit less than eleven hundred.
So, so that legislation is drafted, it's in crossover, if they pick it, then they have to sort of negotiate details between House and Senate before they send it to the governor and the governor has to say yes, is that more or less the way it goes?
Pretty much.
And, and neither of our representatives would be involved in the negotiation of the wording of that, of the final draft, right? 'Cause neither of them are education committee folks?
Uh, no, but Deanna is on, um, the committee that's that, uh, H seventy-six, which has to do with the strike imposition and binding arbitration.
Right, but now with the consolidation.
Not with three sixty-one, right.
I was just thinking that, if, I mean, if, if you, are you, if, you know, if we need more sort of language in there that would make it clear that a school district like this, you know, would need an exception, I suppose one thing we could do is recommend language to say, here's some conditions under which, you know, exceptions and waivers should be made.
Thought I had seen a lot.
There's, there's a lot more in that section this year than there was last year.
Being able to do a waiver with certain conditions.
Enough to make us comfortable, or?
I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah, I didn't see anything in there that, from, from the consolidation study we did a couple of years ago. Yeah, I was pretty comfortable with it.
Okay, great. Good.
Alright, good discussion, we'll stay on top of it and, uh, though, you know, you need a couple glasses of water sometimes to read through those legislative reports, you know, they're, they're, uh, at least staying on top. Yep, uh, alright, uh, community engagement, any, uh, activities? I know I've almost done the mindfulness.
I did.
Jen, what do you got?
I went to, let me see the name of it. I went to a meeting at the city last Wednesday for the Community, Community Service Commission meeting. And that, and on that, and they're talking about the dog park, and a dog park in Menueski and some other things, so it's very informative.
Like another dog park?
Like a da- actual functioning dog park that
Here in Menueski, we don't have one here, right?
Right.
We got the one down by the water, right?
Yeah, but it's not, uh, totally enclosed and it's not like, um, you know, like Star Farm has an enclosed one in downtown by the waterfront, so, so that, and then they couple other things, that was a big one, and then they just talked about how the ways of the community, the library, all that stuff, it was pretty interesting to go and see how great that commission is doing and the great things they're doing for our community.
Mm-hmm.
It's awesome.
We have a student on that committee too, I think, is it Hannah?
Hannah Little.
Yeah.
Yep. So.
That's good to see, activity.
Yeah, it, it's really good.
Good, nice.
Yeah.
Sean, did you go to the United Way?
The opiate conversation I did.
How was that?
It was, it was really good, they, um, started off with some speaker, keynote speakers, they had, um, a person from the Dream Center in Rutland.
Yeah.
They had a community organizer from Essex who had done some work around kind of beautification in areas where there'd been loitering and vandalism and different things. Um, and then, uh, they broke into local planning groups and we had a really good turnout from the Peace Jam group.
Great.
And so they took part in that, and the focus was really on neighborhoods, like what can neighborhoods, how can they come together? Community members in neighborhoods come together to work on different aspects of, of, uh, how opiate uh, use impacts the community.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was good, I'm, I'm not sure, um, having connected back to the Peace Jam to see uh, what if anything really tangible came out of it.
Yeah.
But they're involved in a discussion, so that's, that's, uh, certainly a step forward.
At a regional level and then also at a city level with the group that, um, Julian's been leading.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, have you had another gathering?
Because this one was coming up in March, we did February, so we're gonna skip this one and do April.
Okay, and we're gonna get Rutland at that point to have some folks come up and help us understand what they did down there and.
It's incredible, I had this long interview with an alum of mine, who's a mediator in Rutland and works with the police department and with Project Vision. They're doing incredible stuff down there, and that I think we could easily do here and take advantage of, I mean, amazing stuff.
Nice, we'll have to get word out about that to get a broader, broader grouping out, 'cause I know we've had some good turnouts.
Yeah.
We moved it up here and anytime you change your forum, you're, you're on a risk.
Awesome, I've just been, I'm sure they got mindful that night, though.
Yeah. Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, hey, and I wanted to ask, um, so, so when we had, uh, all those people here a couple meetings ago about transportation, uh, now we've, now we've passed the budget for the next year, uh, and transportation, uh, I was really curious to hear what, um, J C was saying about, you know, mobile or walking buses and so forth, but uh, uh, as a, as a, you know, responding to sort of the community outreach piece, what are we gonna do about the transportation piece? How are we gonna approach that and think about it?
So what's going on right now is, uh, a couple of us did the walk with some parents up from Elm Street, um, on Tuesday morning.
Yeah.
And then.
It's a long walk, how long did it take?
Took us thirty minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had a five-year-old with us, six-year-old.
Yeah.
I did it in a, in fifteen, sixteen minutes, but my legs are a lot longer, so
Yeah.
It took a little less time, but it's all uphill, the guy, the little guy struggled on the way up the hills, but to be expected.
Yeah. So that was one of the steps that the parents were changed and that was a relationship-building activity. And then we have, um, uh, some interview time set up, uh, I think it's next Friday.
Yeah.
Where, uh, Parents for Change and, and some of the local parents involved will come and there's gonna be, they're gonna ask some questions of board members, I'll be there and, uh, we might have some staff members there as well.
We just gotta watch out for a quorum and that.
Who's going up from this group, who's going?
What day is it?
It's the Friday the twentieth.
Friday the twentieth, yeah.
Five thirty.
I can kind of.
I think you had said you were gonna be here.
I'm okay.
Okay. So we've got two, it should be good.
You want us?
Yep.
Okay.
Michael and Jen.
I'll be getting busy for leaving.
My, my, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, that's the next step, and then, uh, Meg Klein, one of the facilitators of the Parents for Change, was gonna put together kind of an update that I could share with you at the next, uh, board meeting.
Great.
I'll put it in the, the board agenda packet.
Okay.
They're also reaching out to, uh, U V M, they have, there's a graduate course that has been doing a transportation study. They move it from semester to semester, so different students pick it up each time, but it's been a continuous project. And they're studying more from a regional approach, but I've connected the groups together, um, so that hopefully U V M can offer some support and some data. Um, and then they're also going to try and schedule some, Parents for Change, schedule some time to meet with C C T A and talk to them about, you know, what our concerns are and possibilities with them.
Right.
Um, so, it's still a work in progress, I, I wouldn't, uh, I'd expect an update or two between now and, uh, early fall.
Yeah.
And then, um, the idea all along was that there would be this process that would culminate in some options um, to be considered by the administration and the board, um, next budget cycle.
Budget season?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
We may have other considerations at the same time, never, based on our previous discussion, where that might go, okay.
Great, great, thanks for doing that.
Did you have a community engagement piece you'd like to share?
Um, I wasn't sure, um, if, um, it could be included in the student report, um, but if, if so, I forgot to add it in, but, um, uh, yesterday, uh, with Upper Ban, which is the, um, the Community Burlington of Menueski, uh, uh, High School and College Prepar- Preparation Readiness Program, um, a few, me and, uh, two other students from B H S went to the State House to, um, talk to some legislators about, um, some pro- um, problems or just connections we have about the school and the legislators, and also just some learning more about our programs. And so, yesterday, I had a, um, a good discussion with Clem and Deanna um, about, um, just students and how they're doing now compared to the past and also like what we could do for the future. And also, um, another heavy subject of dual enrollment,
Yeah.
um, how that's being tossed up in the air right now as to whether or not it should be continued or discontinued for next year. And, um, so far, um, we've been trying to, um, focus a lot on that and trying to get the support of some legislators, and, um, that's what I did yesterday.
Keep your voice active on that one, that's a, that's a good fight, um, to stay involved in, for sure.
So dual enrollment, actually what they're talking about is whether or not it's funded locally or whether the state.
Yeah.
And what I've heard recently is that they, um, they're hoping to, to fund at least partially out of the Ed Fund.
'Cause it's very expensive.
It is.
Dual enrollment means, like C C V kind of stuff?
Yeah, students, high school students taking college courses.
Yeah.
Not necessarily C C V, but also any eligible.
Yep.
Anywhere.
So if our students are paying, it's coming out of our general budget?
Uh, not right now, but it was set a few years ago when it first started, it was set to, uh, become a local expense.
Okay.
And then people were kinda saying, holy macro.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that might go over the two percent increase.
Yeah.
Well, you'd hope you have demand to go over the two percent, right? Have the kids ready for it, take it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, you know, keep your voice active on that one, Rainbow, that's a, that's a good fight to stay active in.
Yeah, well done.
What was your comment before, just if you want it, grab it, essentially, if you wanna go get it?
Yeah.
Get up?
Get out.
Get out, get it.
Absolutely, great, uh, anything else? Alright, uh, next meeting April eighth, Parent Teacher Conference is April ninth and tenth. We have nothing under executive session for tonight. So at this point, if there is nothing else, I would accept a motion to adjourn.[1795.81]
So moved, second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of adjourning, aye.
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 Opposed? All right.